I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order. First off, our voucher appears from last meeting.
Hello.
Shady by John. Second by Dave, any discussion? All in favor?
Bye bye.
Next is Arlene's voucher.
Someone.
The move by Brad.
Second.
Second, any any discussion? All in favor?
Bye.
Okay, first on our agenda here is twenty nine oh five Staley Road. Is somebody here for them? All right, I'm. Yeah, one of you come over here, please.
One of us?
Yeah, who's talk? Whoever wants to talk just. Or even both come if you want, and pull up another chair. Okay, give us a little idea of what you're doing.
Um, my, um. Four years ago, my dad passed away and my mom came and lived with us and he put an addition on the back of our house, a suite. And so it's got, uh, it's like a one big sheet, one bedroom suite, room floor bed. decent sized bathroom, walk-in bathroom. Uh, it's got like a kitchenette, not a, not a kitchen kitchen, but more of the, uh, sink and a couple of pockets. And, um, she passed away last September and had always said to me, you can always use this as a bed and breakfast. And so her name was Nancy and we'd like to open a bed and breakfast called.
Uh, condenses. And anybody have any questions?
So Sharon, is that, that, um, retainer piece on the back of the house, it's not labeled, is that the addition you're talking about?
Yes, but it's really not the whole thing. It's only, it's half of that. Half of that, if you do a line on the right side going down to that part, that little jets out there, that's really the addition.
Okay.
Well, the whole thing was the addition, but we decided to put a portion of the addition to expand our living room and dining room, thinking of this as being an option down the road.
Yeah, yeah. Can I see if you guys have space for a guest parking?
Yes.
You expect just one, one guest or one couple at a time?
I would think so because we're only doing the one room.
Sure.
So I would think of the only one car, that space can fit three cars actually. The parking space.
She's she's the parkings behind the seat.
Yes, right.
Anybody have any other questions? Motion from anyone? Washington approach. Second by Dave, any further discussion? All in favor?
See, you guys thought this was gonna be hard.
Yeah, you can go. Thank you. This is Thermal Fisher, who's there for Thermal? Oh, yeah, I'm gonna put him in the hot seat.
He had supplies that we prepared.
Oh, please, real quick. Steve, did you guys draw anything else?
We did well.
Isn't this similar to that?
We did, uh, the wastewater plant once again back.
Yeah.
Which was in for three or four months ago.
What, what are they doing? They're just gonna move it from A to B? This is something different. Oh, okay. Thermal, I got a thermal over here.
Give Tom a quick second.
Okay. All right, while we're waiting, can one of you snow, what's going on?
Um, yeah, I'll, the first George for that, but I'll go, I'm trying to the internet, sending Fisher and project managers.
Okay.
Uh, this effort, but I'm pretty, it's not speak to a lot of the technical detail.
Good hot seat.
So what, what are you doing?
It's Barberry, B A R, B A R I. Uh, so we are.
What are you doing?
So there is an existing chiller plant that serves, um, part of the frock of roads of the facility. That has failed, it's been found in the middle of the year. There is a rental chiller that has been on site now for the whole tenure, uh, that's been serving that load. So we're looking to, we've designed a solution to replace that plant. Um, but also, um, taking this opportunity within a, it's what's called a heat recovery heat pump plant, so. It operates, you know, forming pump can similar to a chiller plant, but it has, uh, special operating characteristics that allow it to create heating hot water. So instead of rejecting this heat to the atmosphere, we're able to now utilize it to heat spaces within the facility, so. Uh, in addition to replacing that plant, it's allowing us to advance Thermal Fisher's climate action plans and decarbonize their facility. As I said, the proposed plant is going to be in location of the existing, more than a physical out, it's within the interior corridor of the facility. Uh, so it won't be visible anywhere from the perimeter of, of any of the neighboring properties. There won't be any additional noise levels with it, it's actually gonna be, uh, very beneficial, it's only to allow that convert chiller to be moved, which I know has been. Um, a noise, been a noisy name from the past and it continues to be, um, so we'll be able to remove that. Um, another benefit of that as well, we are interconnecting all of these, our plants from the facility. Um, so not only is it not have to offload some load from those, those chiller plants, so reducing a load of more of those that might be closer from the facility. Um, it's also increasing the resiliency of the site, which will reduce the frequency of that rental truck.
Okay, so you're gonna take this one down and rebuild in the same footprint, basically?
Similar, it's gonna be larger.
So what's the, what's that here?
So that is just, um, our site, uh, logistics plan that's allowing, that's gonna show contractors path for the lay down area and.
This is the home.
Correct.
Okay. So you're gonna be redoing this spot, you're not like.
Correct.
Really need any more square footage or taken?
Uh, there'll be a slight increase in square footage, but it won't go any further than the existing boundary of that plant. We're gonna basically fill that small void, um, between some storage tank building and, uh, the existing block. You're basically like your. Existing building, there's no taller building going in, but closing that area, moving equipment indoors, so we're looking at a visor situation.
Any, any questions?
But this building coming down.
I, I.
Are we comfortable with building? Not this one?
Yeah, this one's pretty easy.
Okay.
It just didn't come from the board, it's like being more than a thousand square feet.
Yes, I plan required because it's over a thousand, but it's even undersized from secret, doesn't do anything for additional. It's a potential noise reduction, so everything in that aspect.
Any further discussion? All in favor? So bad to hot seat, huh? Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
One, two, and three are three sleeping tiles. I wasn't at the comp board, John, what happened? Or you missed the two?
On vacation, but I heard there was another, um, it was a drainage plan that came in that hit the WR. So as far as I know, all good, but I don't wanna speak on it because I wasn't there.
So then next we're unfinished business, twenty ninety five baseline, this year for twenty nine five baseline, tell me to come over here, please, so talk to me if you want. Okay, last time I was over there was a bunch of. And there was, uh, I remember there was something about lighting.
Cover letter, they, the cover letter, the king was outside of drawing, so they.
Looks like they put pod lights over the both doors.
And change of facades of three rotations.
About. What about colors? What do you do when I say?
Yeah, there's a fire in action, something.
To the existing builder? Anything from building on this one?
Not really, I mean, just. Talked about they had order, even though they were eliminating. They need something they could add to the building, it didn't really say, but they really have to be dark sky.
They'll catch that when they, when they do their permit. Wasn't there a question about parking in the front yard setback or not, I'm thinking about something else.
Well, there's existing parking. And they were eliminating these spots.
Yeah, there's existing parking right here. Eliminating those? Okay. All right, anybody else have any other questions?
I just have one question. So process three, I saw the, um, to have, I get that full barn, I just put up the one last year. And they had the metal, the dark metal bottom on the top with no stones, is there a reason why that was approved and is there something different about that when this is where we are or?
It's, it's simply a break in the vast, you know, facade, so you could have done the same thing too.
Well, we asked like last night, if they had to sell, have a different material, I think, that's why we'd sell now, I need to make a color.
Yeah.
That would have been better, honestly, because. Here I need her, but.
Yeah, great comment.
Yeah, I'll be, I'm the one who said that I didn't, I didn't think you had.
Yeah, I thought we talked about.
I thought you could do this different color.
This is, this is enough, this is enough. So.
You guys could acknowledge that it's the, you're, you're. You know, seeing, accepting a change in color, not necessarily saying that material has. But you could, you could do that in consideration tonight.
Is everybody good with that?
In our last meeting, we, I had a note that we had suggested, uh, four, uh, uh, trees, two and a half caliper along the front. The deep in his face.
In the front of, in front of them.
The problem is there's no place to put it. Yeah, I got a note there where you ended up saying no.
Oh, you mean out in front of the building, don't you? Yeah, there's.
Sidewalks there, we don't want them on the other side of the sidewalk.
Right, okay.
This is back, right? This is your phone. Just to plant trees there. Is everybody good with just, uh, suggesting to the town board that he can use, uh, alternative, alternative color of another one?
We have that all over the place.
Our minutes reflect that.
Okay, so I would make him, I would make a motion to approve it with that provision, that it doesn't have to be a supplement here, it could be a different color on the bottom.
Second.
I'll second it.
Yep, second. Any further discussing? Okay, that is the island shop nineteen sixty six, someone here for that? I'm gonna have you come over here, sir.
When you're in your package, you guys were given a updated drawing, maintainment, but this is quite a bit different from what we were seeing originally.
Hi, Phoenix. Ronald Cidilio, B R I, G I L I O. Sorry, but G A, G I L I O. Hey, what?
Yeah, good.
So, um, the island shop, as you know, is across the street and, uh, recently they started filling ice cream and velcro speed. So, uh, they've had a couple things that they needed to address. Um, and they're starting to just figure out what exactly that is. I appreciate all the input we've gotten so far. Um, and we're taking that and we're still looking. What we see here, um, there'll be additional drawings that will do. Both of the site and if the building is recorded. Uh, the, the existing site is, uh, is a, the total site is about, uh, point four two acres, but. And, uh, it's well under the name, uh, we did a short form sticker for this and you should, uh, be very good with that. We are required to have, uh, sixteen spaces in the parking lot, we can get as many as nineteen. Um, but the minimum would always be sixteen, uh, even in the proposed use of a food truck. The, uh. There, uh, the drainage for the site would be sheet drained either to the street or to, uh, the side, uh, towards the funeral home. Where there's a swell which can take all the, uh, water away from us and, uh. Uh, we are, um, looking to do an addition to the deck, you'll see that in the brown, um. Section for the addition and. Um, and then next to that, you'll see the, uh, food truck idea, which would serve, right now, we just wanna do the roast beef out of that. Um, and, uh, the ice cream is still safe in the door. So, uh, we're giving in and out, is it in place for the. For the parking lot, so that'll take care of, uh, any concerns for that. Uh, we'll have a new pole sign in the front, which will submit as required and, uh, as well as all the landscaping around it. Other than that, that's pretty much it, uh, complete questions.
But when you did your seating. Is there seating inside?
There's really not seating inside, there's a mercantile area, there might be a table in there, but. As far as I know, people aren't sitting inside.
So the seating are the three, the two tables?
picnic tables and the tables on, on the deck.
Okay, you're saying thirty six, so what about employee? You have, you have two for fourth occupancy, two for your office space and twelve, twelve spaces for the seats. But no employee parking.
Boy, parking was part of the six.
Neighbor allowing. In need.
Yes.
Which one?
General. Business is a little different, so. We're respecting each other tonight. I had some conversations with Ross with, uh, the drainage and that, what was going on, so we also were talking about those pieces.
So right here, we have office space, um, we're taking care of the office space of those, the space of what's in there. Retail, two spaces listed there. Um, thirty six seats, uh, the space of per, and sixteen, um. Don't eat all the natural population.
You have, you have forty six seats, but I only count twenty eight, so where's the other end?
If the picnic tables on the ground.
I want four and four.
Those little ones they have.
These are, these things here.
I don't, that might be what they're counting to.
What are these little?
Those little circles.
Little things here.
Planners.
Those are people.
So I got two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve. Those are some breros. I got twenty eight.
I figured they were like.
I wouldn't.
Club tables.
Well, I didn't call it, so.
So I, I think I was counting, uh, the picnic tables as eight and, uh, I might have deleted a table here and there as it was obtained.
Well, we did, we usually do four on the table.
Okay.
Are you gonna be a dump fence like?
Right now, there is, uh, tote, but you can chime in whenever you have.
Yeah, but ultimately, it'd be optimal to put in a. Dumpster with that, a lot of the times not pulled to that at all, with, uh, enclosed around it.
Correct.
Yeah, we're all putting it.
Right here.
Currently, it's right here.
I see a screen behind the trees.
Okay, I got that. Okay, I see it.
If we needed to make a little more room, we would go to the side of that for a larger dumpster crew.
And do you currently have a health permit for the food now?
Yes, we do.
Ron, what's the red line in the northwest corner going off the driveway and what? What is, is that?
That's the, uh, current driveway. Is.
So the current driveway is on somebody else's property? Okay, so you're pulling it off the property?
Correct.
Okay.
Bringing it back on. Might as well if we're doing this much.
There's gonna be, uh, I need non-shell gear, but because of the one way, uh, try to, you know. I'm, I'm thinking like, uh, you know, exit only out towards the.
Interactions.
Again, then in the inside, so that somebody doesn't try to exit out the entrance lane, spotting something in there.
Um, sure, we could add signage to make sure the directed traffic, traffic's coming around.
Don't wanna overturn anybody's.
Arrows on the pavement.
It would involve the snow, honestly, it.
I don't think people are going to get ice cream. That was my next question.
Look at.
Are you, are you operating the food?
Technically, if they do everything out of a truck, they need another list.
Right.
Are you operating the food truck twelve months out of the year?
The food truck, we would be, yes.
You would be, you're on site?
On site.
So how, how do you? How do you keep it from freezing?
We haven't gotten through a whole year yet, we have, with the food truck currently is not outside.
Okay. Yeah, but if you're gonna be used, you're gonna be using the food truck basically because you're kitchen, correct?
Correct.
So if. It's plugged in like a RV is, so you would just get the food and go sit on the deck or out in the yard or take, or take out. Said my following things?
Yeah, we don't have an extensive menu, it's a very streamlined menu. Few different variations.
So according to the new plant, nothing inside was being redone now?
Um, we're, we, once we get this plan done, we'll see where we are, um, we'll work with Ron, uh, building department. See what, I think we'll have a check, well, we might still have to do for the ice cream and the things of that nature too.
Restaurants, I was something about.
Yeah. Um, so, you know, we're just trying to get this shipped out first, making sure we're, uh, taking care of the big picture.
So the, added, go ahead.
Like restrap or anything?
Um, I mean, we wouldn't need a restrap, I don't believe. We'll follow the code as it tells us, but if we're just having the ice cream inside, I don't think we need it. Yeah, and I don't, and, and I can't speak to that, if it's necessary, yes, but if it's out of a food truck. I think it gets eliminated another way, um, and hopefully it's not going down the drain where we need to strap anyways.
So the.
But of course you would add what we needed.
So the food truck won't be connected to the building, it's just freestanding and free content, self-contained.
It's a truck.
No, I didn't know if there was a drain or something, or they were gonna put from the truck to the building.
Literally in the name, food truck.
Right, okay.
Okay. So, I, I know last week, uh, last month, when we talked about this, there was like a two-step process of change of use first and then the site plan approval. Is that still the case that this needs a change of use? And should that be?
I was gonna say, Ron, do you wanna?
Should that be the first, what we take on the change of use?
The site, I was gonna say, the site plan is hotifying, a change is because of a change of use and, and both validating its allowable ability to be there.
Basically, if you. Prove the site by and change the use.
Does building have any way in on anything here?
Is it what?
Any way in from building on anything on this plan?
Not anything, yeah.
Oh, okay. So do we want?
Go, go grease, grease trap, yes. We got our easy going for water.
Grease trap could be required, depends upon what.
Yeah.
You're going to use the kitchen for. You know, if like, like they're talking about just the inside ice cream, no. I know you don't need it, but if you're talking about washing dishes and, you know, and they're greasy type foods, then yes, and it's gonna be required.
Then when you, then when you need a deal breaker one way or the other.
So where would we wash? Inside the building or in the food truck?
That food truck's got a tank that, fast it would do it, that they can stay inside.
So someone, can someone weigh in on the food truck?
If it's a food truck, it has to be licensed, it's gotta be approved by.
So the food truck has like a sink and everything in it, holding tanks and.
It's overview on, on our products. They're not cooking, they're not cooking, baking. So whether or not the grease trap, I'm not real. To the health department and. Separate conversation, it's question that if we have to address the grease trap with our specific water-based product, then we would address that. Um, as far as the second part, which was, what was your question on the second part? Where would you wash and, uh?
Where would you wash dishes and things? You have any?
We're still utilizing the kitchen inside the building and I'm already set up with a grease trap in there.
Approved by the health department.
Approved by the health department, three day sink with the grease trap, I forget what the, uh, weight on it is, I wanna say ten pounds, if that's alright.
So you got a small under sink unit basically instead of.
Right.
Formal bit, yeah, okay, that, that's.
Kitchen's already.
Good on, I'm good on this discussion at that point then, right?
Anybody else that want, have anything else?
I, I think there should be a real, uh, positive sign on the in, in road, not just in the pavement, uh, that says in, just so that people really can see that.
I agree.
And that.
Since they're gonna be doing twelve months.
Yes, right, and that we had a stop sign at the out, just so that people weren't wheeling out into, uh, what in.
Or do you have some?
Is there a requirement to protect the gas meter, they're not close to the driveway?
Or just see the.
It's on the right side of the building there. They were. Twelve foot dimension.
Actually, gas company.
Right.
Would that fall into building ground? The gas meter protection on that side of the building where the driveway is?
Probably same thing with the left.
Well, what is, what is that?
Side of it, yeah.
What is this white structure in front of it?
That the condensing unit?
Oh, is that all I asked?
Yeah, we went Ballard, anything we need to.
Okay.
Certainly condenser.
Okay, not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really small. By the trees.
The arrow's not quite going.
Over by the trees, there's a. Gas electric.
Four, four, so twelve foot. Oh, it's got twelve feet away though.
That's the width of the road.
No, that's the driveway, it looks like it's.
Five feet, six feet?
Yeah. This is the scale.
They took two little circles that are supposed to be carved out in flowers.
Okay.
It does, those are people.
Oh, you're talking, oh, by D A C unit, I see them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. Just expanding on what you said, because you said stop sign. So a stop sign facing the exiting traffic, probably on the backside of that is sit only.
Yes.
Yeah, so double face one side, instead of getting a C of side, we can stop sign, double face with, you know, exit only on, on the roadward side of it.
Oh, there you go.
And then on the inside up by. The bend, you know, your bend where you're coming around the building, something with entrance, you know. And it needs, no, no exit or entrance only, whatever.
Yeah.
Just saying no traffic exiting out that, that road. I don't wanna overlap.
You said if you needed extra parking, you were gonna use the funeral home. Correct? Someone said that?
They, they, the discussions they had with me and also like funeral home is that employees have been allowed to use it, obviously, when events are not. Um, because right now it is a constraint, you know, even without this stuff in, it's a constrained resource over there, and they said they have been working together as good neighbors.
So would you be asking the funeral home for a license to use his parking lot, so everything's legal?
He did say that now, not above and beyond employee parking, he said he had no problem with customers parking, he's, we don't have that discussion. I'm not sure a license to use this.
Well, we, we had this come up on another parcel somewhere else, so when you're using someone else's property. You would need either a license or an easement. And that would be filed with Erie County. It's just a one-page or two-page document, no big deal. But then that would make everything legal, so. But then that would make everything legal. So whoever owns the funeral home wants to sell it next week. That, that goes with the sale. Otherwise, the next guy might say, no, I don't want your parking over here. Want me to protect you?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's probably, we've seen it come up quite a few times, believe it or not. So if anything for protection for you guys, it would be smart.
I don't. I don't think it's required.
But just something, I mean, writing, writing, something that's an email.
Well, just have a license, a license. It's a small little document. It's not like a full-blown legal easement, but it's just a license to say that you can use that parking lot.
It's like public rest or our employee parking, yeah, isn't it? Yeah, people are parking.
Right, right. Not only that, just that would protect him too, if someone got hurt on his property. Also, there was an issue with property on the other side that someone got hurt. That makes everything legal and clean. Anybody have any, anything else? So we wanna make a motion to, to approve this, to approve the change of use and the site plan. Can we do it together? Sure, see why not? You know, with, uh, the signage requirements, entrance, exits.
In Ballard.
And then to protect, something to protect the utility corridor on that one side. And that we would, uh, suggest that they get either a license or an easement on the funeral home parking lot.
And there are those background sites.
And if there, if they do change to, uh, from the tote cans to a dumpster, it would have to be screened and enclosed. Any, everybody go with that one?
So moved.
You stop, you can go in this second by Brad, and there's a discussion. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Ross, something?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, everybody.
Next on our agenda is the local law on property maintenance. It was already approved. Councilman Garcia, correct?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Garcia came and did ask him to come to this meeting, but unfortunately, they already approved that law.
Right, they already approved the law.
So when we asked you, sir, how it's law, you have to go through the planning board to come along. So how did you? By. The way that was tabled, what?
That was disapproved. We didn't table.
No, we tabled it for further information, meaning of.
I mean, it was so, it, it really was confusing, Jose, because the first time we got it, we had it marked up in yellow. And there was real confusion as to whether we were just looking at the yellow or the whole thing. So that was tabled. And the following meeting.
Was.
We had no meeting. Um, and I think the, the chairman, rightfully so, you know, asked the board and everybody agreed that we thought nothing there. It's and, um, we had a five meetings, and it was both in question. And unfortunately, we did. So.
And neither was the building, and I requested building to be here that night. This case, he was on vacation. And then generally, how we've done things in the past is that someone comes and presents, or someone's here to answer our questions. That you send a law to us and say, well, here's the law. What do you guys think? And we're like, well, what is this? There was no one to explain that to us.
I think you and I had a discussion.
We did not have, June? We did not have a lengthy discussion, as you put in the email. I ducked in your office for a few minutes and, and just asked you one quick question about. Well.
Nonetheless.
But still, it's not my, it's not my job to sell your law, sir.
I wasn't trying to sell anything.
No, it's not my job to sell your law.
And it's, I don't think it's my job to sell any law. I created the law for the people of Grand Island.
Mm-hmm.
And I felt there was a need. Town board voted for it. They voted to send it to you. Mr. DeGotti comes to all of their meetings, he's aware of every conversation we've had and every discussion we've had. Uh, it was not at your meeting and that was.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we asked about the letter from the county. And you knew that the letter from the county came and, but nobody told us, and we never got a copy of it.
Did you know, Tom, or no? Failed to respond. And if.
Oh, I, I, I was under the impression they did. That's not what I was told. I was told that the letter came in in May. But it was never pushed to the planning board. The county didn't say they didn't care about it because it was internal.
They missed the thirty day deadline, which was, which was June sixteenth.
It's my understanding that the letter came in in May.
It wa, it wasn't sent to the planning board till April, was it April?
No, May.
No, we, we voted to send it to the planning board at the last meeting. So they had till June fifteenth, I think, to respond, which they did not respond.
Yeah, but then, then I felt that, you know, I, I, I mean, I'm not trying to beat you up, sir, but we can't function here without all the information and all the pieces.
Sure.
If there's an applicant comes in and we have a partial application and the applicant's not here, it's tabled. We, we can't figure out what they're doing or what's in their mind. And the same goes for the town board. We can't figure out what you guys are doing. What? You're, you're, you're another entity here. So there should have been, you should have came and presented, I feel. And that if there was no letter, you should have sent us a letter and said, hey, guys, don't worry about this. It's past the thirty days. I mean, we don't, we don't get that. Well, we should get all, if you want, if you want the planning board's input, you want us to do a, you know, a, a decent job here. We need all the information, not just a piece of it. Not just the law. And then you, then you mentioned, then you sent out emails. And quite honestly, sir, you were very, you sent me.
Well, I responded to your request.
Well, yes, there was still an email coming to me. And you sent an email. Well, yeah, but councilman, there, there, there's no reason to be to start calling us names. I mean, we're all about.
Called anybody a name.
You called us fear mongers.
The terms you were using were fear mongers.
That's your interpretation.
What terms are you talking about? Uh, there was a discussion and since here, I can't say who's speaking all the time, but it was all great. We passed this. Now the building department's gonna run around issuing tickets and finding everybody in this town.
No, my, 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 my point of this, no, this is what, this is what I said. I said, oh, we're gonna pass a law that's gonna be selectively enforced. I said, is the building department gonna run around with a tape measure measuring laws now? Because I have a real problem with the, the laws in this town being passed, and they're only enforced on people that somebody in this building doesn't like. Because other people get to do whatever they want, and this guy over here, he does anything we take away in leg shackles. That's the kind.
Inproper.
Yeah, and it happens all the time. And that's, that's my point of passing another law. And then I, like, well, last year we passed a law on bed and breakfast. We had one in here today.
Foot ticket for one mile. They said issue them for twenty-five. We can't control the.
I, I understand that. We had, we had a couple in here for a bed and breakfast tonight. Last year, we spent all this time going over a law, multiple copies and renditions of this law to determine if there was clean linen and proper toilet paper in the bathroom. And I wanna know, did the building department ever go and inspect any of them? Why are we wasting our time? Why are we paying a law firm six, seven, eight hundred dollars an hour to write these laws that have to be rewritten three, four, five times because half the time they can't spell right, or they, they call something different terms throughout the entire law? Why are we burning all this money? You guys are creating these laws and spending money. Nobody thinks about the, the bills that this law firm is billing us. We just keep creating laws that nobody enforces unless somebody on the town board doesn't like you. Then suddenly.
You're frustrated about something. I don't.
I'm frustrated about everything that happens in this building. I, every single month, I can, every single month I come here and I, I complain about the same things over and over again, selective enforcement of our laws.
Let's try to just stay with this one thing here, Fred. I understand your frustration.
Uh, I, I just, you know, and then you said, well, there was no positive uh,
Constructive.
constructive thing said. We generally pull these prints apart. We don't come in and say, oh, wow, this is really pretty. You did a great job. We'll come in and say, like tonight, no ballards. How are you gonna do the drain? How are you gonna do this? We don't like that you don't have signs. We pull these things apart. We don't come over here and pat people on the backs. That's.
I don't believe constructive criticism depending on that. My interpretation of that, maybe I see it another way would be, hey, I see where you're going with this, but what I don't like about this is this, that, and the other thing. What could we incorporate this, or could we not incorporate this? Or could we take this section out? But we had a new section in. That's constructive criticism, in my opinion. Maybe I'm wrong.
Okay, so then on, on that, on that note, I think it would have been beneficial on your part as a town councilperson to say, wait a minute. The planning board's struggling with this. I'm gonna go meet them, or I'm gonna call the chairman and make sure that everyone's here has a copy of the law. I'm gonna come here next month and explain everything and, and give us the shot that we were duly to have by law. And before you voted, it would have taken one more month. Like you talked about, there's all this blight on Grand Island. Well, that's been going on for years. Yeah, it's not like this is some big, huge thing that's gotta get done immediately. And then you just blow it through the town board and you will pet, and you approve it, and you ignore this board completely. Well, I, I don't feel that you, you might have got a, a legal interpretation from the, from the council. My brother's been a criminal lawyer fifty years. We can put, and Tom's a lawyer. We can put twelve lawyers in this room. We'll get a different opinion from all twelve of them, however they see fit. So just by listening to your town lawyer doesn't mean that's, that's the Bible. I, I feel that you should have waited and gave us the opportunity to do what we do. Instead of just saying, cause quite honestly, I think you having people coming on my property, cutting my lawn and can potentially could get hurt and get their foot cut off by a lawnmower, they're gonna sue the, the landowner. Gonna be whoever's, you, whoever the town hires to come and cut my lawn when I don't, when I don't a- apply to the law. You're gonna send someone over to cut the lawn.
Yes.
Now they're gonna, now there's gonna be, there's gonna be young, wait a second.
I hire a landscaper. They cut my lawn. If they cut their leg off, they're insured.
What, yeah, what if they're paying that employee under the table? I've been in construction for forty years.
An RFP, we're, we're doing it as, as an official contract with the town of Grand Island.
But that doesn't mean that.
And under the table operation.
I, I understand that, but whoever you hire is gonna hire somebody under the table. I've been in construction for forty years. It had, I'm sure Scott can say this, everybody that works at Benderson, there's nobody that ever got paid under the table from some of your subs, not Benderson himself.
I know, no.
Yeah, but what do you think?
So.
It doesn't matter. I understand that your job is over and that's what you're saying.
Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong.
To hell with that. But if that person gets his foot cut off on my lawn, he's gonna sue me.
Well, personally, they're gonna sue you. No matter what, they're gonna sue.
I'm gonna have to turn around and sue the town.
Since this has already been passed by the town.
Right.
And I'm not sure we even have a copy of what the final law is. At least I don't, maybe.
We don't.
So I would suggest that, or that the, uh, we asked the town board to send us a copy of the final, uh, ruling on it and that we receive and file. Period. We take no action on it. It's over and done with. We receive it in our next meeting minutes as we do some correspondence and we file it. That would be my motion.
Second by anyone to Dave's motion?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any further discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
All right, well said. So one road still tabled, bad?